Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases will be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas may be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning division staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take role.
Mr. Freed.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Present.
Mr. Calp.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Yeah.
Mr. Tobin.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Dean will be late, and Mr. Nagar will be late, but we have six for a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from November 21st. Are there any changes or modifications? Not hearing any, I would then entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Chris, would you please call for a vote?
Mr. Freed.
Aye.
Mr. Preister.
Aye.
Mr. Calp.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Tobin.
Aye.
And Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with none abstaining.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff.
I had ex parte.
Okay. Is there anything about that that you think will impact your consideration?
No, just expressing.
Okay. Anybody from staff? All right. Nothing further, we'll move on to the action items. First item is PUD 2205 by One Gas Inc., City Topeka Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Kansas City in Kansas, continuation of a matter from the last docket. Mr. Warner, is this your item?
Mr. Chairman, yes it is. I'll start this off by providing a short review of the changes that were made to the PUD, and then talk about the revised recommendation. So you've got this information in your packet, this is the revised gauge center PUD. This is in your packet along with, I had a cover sheet that lists all the changes, there's some information about site lighting design, and also a site plan for that as well. So focusing on the PUD revisions here, these six things I'm going to talk about were the things that the commission asked for or directed at the last meeting. So first off, the CNG building was relocated to the north property line, the north fence line. The CNG fueling stations were also relocated to the north fence line. The buffer along the west property line was increased to 32 feet. And then the buffer along the south property line was increased to 30 feet. And then, as I mentioned also, previously, the lighting schematic design criteria and the location graphic were included, as was requested. So those are the kind of the main changes. There's some other changes that weren't requested by the planning commission that they also made to the master plan. I won't really go over those unless there's questions. Staff report, or the staff recommendation remains basically the same. Number four was added for a bit more detail on the landscaping note that's on the master plan. This is really pertaining to the buffer along the south and west property lines, and also the type of landscaping along the south property line. So really just providing a little more detail on the master plan in the notes, and not just on the graphic. So with that, commissioners, be happy to try to answer some questions.
Are there any questions of staff? I'm not seeing that we have any questions. It's my understanding, public hearing has already been held on this matter?
Yes, and closed.
And just closed. Is there anyone that, would the changes believe once or believes we should be having reopen the public hearing at this time, for further comment on the revisions? I'm not hearing, so are there any comments anyone wants to make, based on, I know there were folks who requested changes? Whether you have any questions or concerns about the changes that were made to the plan, whether or not those responded to your concerns satisfactorily from the last meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would just say that I was happy to see that the compressor station and the fast fill stations were moved from the south property line to the north property line, and that the added green space was put in there, and then the note number four regarding the contiguous evergreen trees. So that satisfied my concerns.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
Mr. Chairman, would you consider opening up the public hearing? There might be--
Sir, I'm going to need you to sit down, please.
So that's enough.
At this point, the commission has decided there's no need to open the public hearing again.
I would like to at least myself acknowledge the effort that the applicant made here responsive to the concerns that were raised by the commission at the last meeting, and it came from members of the public. So it's, I hope that negotiation went well, but it looked like it ended in a good result.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, is there a motion? Yes, sir.
I would move approval, if I can find a motion. Move approval of the-- move approval of the proposed PUD and master plan as set out in the staff report, and have the planning commission adopt the staff findings and analysis as its own.
And does that include the revised staff recommendations, including number four?
As submitted by staff in the report, yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Chris, would you please call for the vote?
We'll go from the bottom up, Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Mr. Tobin.
Nay.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Nagar.
Aye.
Mr. Calp.
Aye.
Mr. Preister.
Aye.
Mr. Freed.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to one with none abstaining.
We now move on to item number two on the agenda. For Auburn Washburn USD 437, there are two items.
It seems like--
First item--
--people who live there talk pretty democratic.
Is A 2203 by Auburn Washburn USD requesting annexation of approximately 93 acres located at 29th Street and Southwest Auburn Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be taking this case. So this is an annexation. The property owner has consented to the annexation, and the property is contiguous to the city. Review of an annexation is not required by the planning commission, but the land use and growth management plan brings annexations greater than 10 acres to the planning commission for review. Again, this is, so this is a unilateral annexation, and again, the property owner has consented to that annexation, and this will require governing body approval. Subject property is 93 acres, and is located on the northeast corner of southwest 29th Street and Southwest Auburn Road. The property is currently in tier three of the urban growth area. Tier three makes up the bulk of the UGA outside of tier one, the urban growth area. Developing these areas requires graduating services to tier two, meaning it is cost-effective for the city to make investment for all of the urban services in the area. Because this is contiguous to the city, there are already a significant number of services that are easily available or within a very reasonable distance. Sanitary sewer service is available off of Southwest 29th Street, and an existing eight-inch water line abuts the east side of the property from Southwest 27th Street. It should also be considered that sanitary sewer will be provided by the Sherwood Improvement District. It is not determined at this time whether or not water will be handled by the city or Rural Water District number one. Fire and Topeka Police do not have any additional costs to provide adequate service to this area. Streets will also not have any additional costs, as this is being annexed at the property line. So none of those improvements would be on the county. Just making sure that I touch everything. So additionally, the county does have projects planned for Southwest Auburn Road, and there's also, I believe, an intersection project as well at 29th and Auburn. This is a concept of the site currently. This is not the full parcel itself, but kind of that southeast side, right next to what abuts the city. And this will be plotted at a future time, so this is kind of that conceptual drawing we have for now as well, that would precede a site plan or anything like that. And city staff recommends that this annexation is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I'll take that back to the concept. And I would take any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Yes, sir.
My apologies for running a few minutes late. I was coming in from out of town from another obligation, but my first question about this one is, when would it be decided whether the city or who would be in charge of the water? It says that's not been determined yet, I guess. What's the timeline or process for that decision?
I can respond to that. There's a statutory procedure set up for if the city wants to provide the water, has to provide notice to the Rural Water District, and then they have to negotiate, because the city will have to purchase some of the infrastructure and the going concern of the Rural Water District. But the decision hasn't been made yet. We've provided notice to the Rural Water District that we may be the water service provider, but we have not made a decision yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would that marry the, in a situation where it is the city making the request for the change of the water service provider, it says here, it's a one-time payment to the compensation to the Rural Water District. Does that come from the city or from the applicant in a case like this? The school district or the city?
That comes from the city.
Any other questions of staff? So as I understand, the vote in this case is just whether or not we are recommending to the city to approve the annexation. Is that correct?
You're just essentially making a finding that the proposed annexation is consistent with the land use plan.
Gotcha.
The governing body has sole authority.
Gotcha. All right. Understanding that's what we are doing, is there any discussion, further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for interrupting. I'm a landowner out there, and I got notice I was--
Sir, would you please sit down? We have a process. There's two hearings on this matter. This is the annexation. There will be another matter that will still be addressing this property tonight.
It's time in that I could--
Not at this time, not on this matter. Is there a motion?
Motion approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second, that the annexation is consistent with the land use plan. Could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Dean is not here. Mr. Freed.
Aye.
Mr. Preister.
Aye.
Mr. Calp.
Aye.
Mr. Nagar.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Tobin.
Aye.
And Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero with none abstaining.
Thank you. Next item is now the public hearing of item Z 2206 by Auburn Washburn USD 437 requesting to amend the district map from RR1 Residential Reserve District PUD Planned Unit Development with a C2 Commercial, RR1 Single Family District, and ONI1 Office and Industry Institutional District Uses all to RR1 Single Family District to allow for new middle school. Mr. Treffern?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Ian Treffern. I'm an associate planner here. This evening, I'll be speaking with you about Z 22/06, Auburn Washburn USD 437. As you described, this is a rezoning application to change the designation from RR1 Residential Reserve with PUD Planning and PUD Planning at Development with RR1 Single Family, C2 Commercial, and ONI1 Office and Institutional Uses to RR1 Single Family Dwelling District. This property was zoned PUD back in 1999, and has remained undeveloped since that point in time. On November 29th, 2022, a neighborhood information meeting was held with property owners in a 1,000-foot boundary in the county and 500-foot boundary in the city. Thirteen people were in attendance to that meeting, five of whom were city or applicant staff. Topics discussed in that meeting included stormwater management, traffic, and connectivity to the neighborhood to the east. There should be a copy of the minutes from that meeting in the back of your packet. The site itself is located on approximately 93 acres, and has connections to 29th Street to the south, and Auburn Road to the west, and K4 is located to the north. Notably, there's a type-two stream running west to east along the southern portion of the property, near the intersection of 29th and Auburn. That's not mapped here, but it's where the ridge line is to the south. Adjacent zoning includes RR1 Residential Reserve to the north, west, and south, and RR1 Single Family Dwelling to the east. And then, as Bryson mentioned, in the future land use map, this property is designated as the residential urban growth area, and has a tier-three service area designation. These are areas which lack some major urban services. That said, this property does have most urban services readily available, and the property is contiguous to city boundary, which is not characteristic of tier three. So with that, staff recommends approval, and I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I could, on the zoning map, you get a couple little notches. Those are areas that are not part of the PUD, but are they under the same ownership?
Yes, they're in the same property. Back in 1999, for one reason or another, the entire property didn't get zoned under PUD, and the rest remained under that RR1. I'm not entirely certain why that happened, but it is in the same property.
Any other questions? All right, I would then ask-- is there a representative from Auburn Washburn? You'd step forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Wood with Cal Valley Engineering, 14700 West 114 Paris, Lenox, Kansas, 66215. I am here with the design team on the project, civil engineer on the project, and be happy to answer any technical questions related to the project that you may have, but really don't have a formal presentation, given that this is just rezoning.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the representative at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just curious, was a traffic impact study conducted, or take a look at how it might impact the intersections nearby?
Yes, a detailed traffic study was completed, actually by another consultant. It's not here this evening. But in general, they looked at the adjacent roadways, both Auburn Road, 29th Street. They did a capacity analysis of the intersection down there, and as was mentioned by staff, the county is in the process of planning a roundabout for that area. So we've been kind of working in concert with them, sharing data back and forth to get that appropriately managed. And then we've been mostly addressing our access to the site, again, kind of working with the county, trying to strategize, again, a heavy usage such as a school, trying to make sure we're managing that traffic on our campus to maximum extent practical. And then we are proposing, and again, it's not necessarily presented here this evening, but some additional turn lanes on 29th Street as well as Auburn Road to help mitigate our traffic.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I remember reading there being some mention of making some pedestrian pass for some of those neighborhoods. I'm wondering, like, are there any more details to how students might walk or bike to the school to alleviate some of that traffic concern?
Currently, as part of our plans will be submitted to the city, we're proposing to add a trail connection to 27th Street. It's the only point of access we have to ride away to the adjacent neighborhood. There was some discussion at our neighborhood meeting with the adjacent landowners about actually connecting to the lots directly to our east. Part of that, we're not doing, one, we don't have control of the land to actually physically make a connection to the adjacent streets, but two, to keep a nice tree buffer between us and the residential neighborhood to the east. So at this time, we are going to have the connection, it's going to, looking at this plan here, along the east side of the track, it's a five-foot trail that's going to connect the back end of our site to the neighborhood. I think the discussion at this point in time is we're going to build kind of the pedestrian infrastructure around the building, and then at such time that sidewalks are improved along 29th Street, then there would be the possibility to actually connect down to that roadway at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One additional, actually.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in some of the information, there was a concern raised about potential flooding on 29th Street, and does the site design take the additional runoff due to the impervious surface into account?
It does. What's kind of presented on this plan here, it's again, kind of hard to see, because it's very schematic in nature. There is a detention basin proposed on the southeast quadrant of the campus. We are going to manage most part increase of both volume and runoff in that location. Again, the design goal at this time is to limit how much, actually to zero increase in both that 24-hour volume and that runoff to the two culverts that are crossing 29th Street. I agree with the Laker, to the folks to the southeast, we are doing our best to mitigate that. And it was pointed out to staff with our concern that there is subdivisions being developed peripheral to this site, that we have no specific comment on their drainage design, but just specifically to the school itself, we're doing what we can do to meet city standards as well as alleviate those concerns.
Any other concerns? Questions? All right, sir, thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would wish to address the commission as it relates to this rezoning application? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Dennis Ross. I live at 7810 Southwest El Cerrito, that's the Lake of Caro neighborhood. About 16 of us around the neighborhood there. I'm objecting to the relocation of the middle school there at 29th and Auburn Road. Part of it's getting addressed, some concerning traffic flow. As you all know, 29th Street and Auburn Road are highly, highly busy. As a side note, I'm hearing there's a possible proposal of a turnpike exchange now at an That, I understand, was originally on Wanamaker, 437 School District. I guess, got that stopped some years back, because they didn't want the traffic going by the school at 61st. So we're concerned about that. 29th and Auburn Road has had one fatality, if memory serves me right, maybe two. It's an open intersection right now. I know there's plans, roundabouts. I don't know that they can slow this traffic down to a school zone at 20 miles an hour. We've also got Indian Hills to the east, Great School that is. A legal part of, a couple of legal reasons here, I think, that you need to reconsider is, this bond issue passed at 437, and I voted for the middle school to be built at basically Yerish Road and 33rd South Mission Township Fire Department. Moving the location that was approved by the voters feel that will require a new vote or do-over, that bond issue, that passed with that address on it, not at 29th and Auburn Road. Many people, again, I said, voted for the new school, including me, not at 29th and Auburn Road. Going ahead with an unapproved location may result in some costly litigation there. That's my opinion. Another legal caveat to this is Lake of Caro that I'm representing. The Division Water Resources, State of Kansas, had been going back and forth with us. I've lived there about 31 or 32 years. They've been going back and forth with us for probably 15 or 20 years, because our lake was considered a high-hazard dam, just because of the water, the property downstream from us. Our dam goes out, our spillway goes out, it goes across 33rd Street, millions of dollars of property, that being Sherwood downstream from us. They told us we had to rehab our lake. Many of, if you've seen it out there, it was done in 2014. We had to do it, or they were going to breach the dam. So drastically dropping our property values. We spent almost $500,000, divided by 16 people around there, plus some people like myself. We had so much silting from construction, including 437, that we had a lot of silting in there also. In summary, we have a traffic problem, hope it gets addressed. Runoff from Lake of Caro, we can't take anymore. That dam was sized. The dam, the project was sized, hydronic studies, runoff from Division Water Resources, State of Kansas. Think that we could have legal issues if State of Kansas is getting involved here, too, because they sized our dam that way. So, you know, 437 may divert the water, go into a spilling basin, flatten it out, move it around. It's still going to head south under 29th Street. We can't take anymore runoff. So I think with the bond issue, changing location, could be a legal issue, the State of Kansas, Division Water Resources will get involved, could have an issue there. We've had massive silting from a contractor on the north side that left town to go to Florida, and we had to pay to get the silt out. Silting happened from 437 also, when they built Indian Hills. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
None.
I do have one quick question. Your issue about the dam and the sizing of the dam, if I understand it correctly, you would then be concerned about any further development anywhere within the watershed?
Well, it was sized. We had to raise it about four feet. The spillway had to be widened from about 60 to 120 feet. Just giving a little history here. A new tube was put in, a spilling basin below it, that's why it cost a half million dollars. They did lots, we had to do core bearings in the dam naturally, lots of engineering reports, watershed studies, and hydronic studies and so forth, based on the watershed that was there. So that's why I say, I'm sure the Division Water Resources is probably going to get involved in that, because we can't take anymore watershed. When we closed the valve on our new lake, and it was down to a five-acre pond, and surface water is 30 acres, we had a two-and-a-half, three-inch rain, and it filled it in a day. It was a 30-acre lake again. It was a 30-acre lake again. That's how much we get. A lot of that's because of streets, sidewalks, roofs on the north side of 29th Street. We actually get runoff west of Auburn Road, clear to, there's a Sacramento Street over there, that's about the crest of the hill. That's how far the runoff comes. Comes under Auburn Road, it'll hit 437s. So we're going to have more because of all the roofs and acres of parking lot. And again, I see their plan, moving the water to the east into a flat basin, slow it down, but my opinion, of course, Mother Nature's going to do what it's going to do. It's going to head south, and we're going to take the water eventually. So that's the runoff problem we have. And they could come in, make us, okay, now we have to resize the dam again, now we're going to spend whatever that number might be, because now we can't hold the water, and our spillway is now too small. So all that water, if it breaches the dam, it goes through the spillway, now it's going over 33rd Street below us and into Lake Sherwood.
Okay.
I hope I'm helping you there.
Could I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
With the engineer? Is that okay?
Sure, yeah, we'll do that next.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak as to the rezoning of the property at 29th and Auburn? Okay. I would ask the representative to come back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. So my question is, you've done the stormwater analysis, and where is this water after it leaves the site on the southeast corner? Is it staying on the north side of 29th Street? Where does it go from there?
No, there's a culvert underneath 29th Street in the southeast corner of the property that we will be, again, diverting our water to, once we've treated it and held it back.
So then it flows under 29th Street?
It does, into Lake The Carol.
Into the lake?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Was there, before, was there any, did you wish to address anything else that was raised at the public hearing?
I don't really have any additional follow-up comment. We did respond to this comment, email earlier last week as well, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else, again, one last time, wants to speak on this matter? All right. Public hearing then is closed on this matter. Are there any further questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask, Mary, since the issue of the bond cottles came up, would you agree that even if that comment or question is correct, it's not a land use issue?
Correct. That that issue is legally irrelevant to your deliberations.
Thank you.
Again, this is just a zone change. There would be additional plans submitted, if I understand, they would have to go through a plan and have other things evaluated if they actually get to the point of attempting to construct the school at the site. They'd have to go through plans through the planning department and have all those reviewed, make sure we meet code. Is that accurate?
That's correct. At the very least, subdivision plat that will have a stormwater management plan that comes along with it, and then a site plan at some point to kind of, the buildings and the sidewalks and all that stuff.
And would there be traffic studies as well as it would be?
There's a traffic study that's been submitted, and so it's underway, basically.
Any other questions for staff? Any other comments regarding the application? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would offer a motion to approve the proposed rezoning of the subject property from the RR1 and PUD to the city's R1 zoning.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Chris, would you please call for the vote, please?
Mr. Free?
Aye.
Mr. Preisner?
Aye.
Mr. Calp?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0 with none abstaining.
Next, we move to item number three under Action Items, public hearing of Z8706A, Southern Hills PUD, by New Beginning Missionary Baptist Church, to amend the planned unit PUD, the C4 commercial uses, the PUD with M12 family dwelling district at southeast corner of 38th Street between Southeast Colfax Place and Southeast Adams. Mr. Rizlin?
Yes. We have the aerial map up there. So the property is just over six acres, and it is located just a little bit south of the corner of southeast 37th Street and southeast Adams Street. As you stated, this is for, the proposed change is to PUD M1, and that is for 24 units of affordable senior housing. Those would be duplexes. Staff does recommend approval of the PUD zoning subject with the conditions listed in the staff report. Here is a view of that currently vacant property that is looking west from Adams Street. So what would be on the right side of that screen is kind of where there's that existing commercial along 37th. And here we have the PUD master plan for Southern Hills. So lots 1, 2, and 3, those will be where the duplexes and the clubhouse will actually be built. Track A, which is kind of on the top left, is a proposed drainage. Track B, which is the top right, is for open space. And then Track C is going to be essentially, what is the right-of-way? And the intent there is that the city will take over the street and utilities at a later date. And that will also require them to build the city street, or the street and utilities to a city standard. This property will also be platted at a future time as well, and that will need to comply with what we have here in the PUD master plan. Looking at the zoning, so again, just to the north, we have some C2 commercial, there's some R1 single-family. To the south and the west, there's also some M2 that's immediately to that south, or the west and south. And then to the east, you have some I1 industrial. Compatible land use. So currently, the land use plan shows this as neighborhood commercial, but there is already some existing commercial along 37th Street. The property has remained vacant since it was a planned business center in 1960, so it's been quite a while that this property's been vacant. Rezoning and development of the site will provide a transition area between those higher-intensity commercial uses to the north and east, into kind of that lower-density, single-family residential to the south and west. Again, the PUD is being utilized to allow for those streets and utilities to be developed as part of a low-income housing tax credit project. And staff recommends approval of proposed rezoning from PUD C4 commercial to PUD M12 family dwelling district. And I would take any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Yes, sir?
I'm curious, so the commercial district to the residential district, am I wrong in thinking that that would, any residential use would already be cumulatively included? And I could be wrong on that, and if so, that's fine. But also, like, is there a particular reason to switch it if it is permissible anyway?
So the PUD typically outlines a much more rigid, what is allowed to be developed on that site. So the most recent, there was that planned business district at one point in time, the most recent was actually a church. So this did not align with what was proposed there. So that is why the PUD is being amended for this.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions of staff? Is there a representative, a property owner? Yes, sir? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joshua Blinsky with SVB Engineering, 101 South Kansas. We're the local representative for the zoning process. I have Connor Menard here with Excel Development Group as well to answer any questions. I think you summed that up quite well. If it's well within the neighborhood, nice transition from the residential to the commercial to the north.
Are there any questions of the representative? All right, sir. Thank you. Now we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to address this zone change? Not seeing that anybody's here for that item, we will then close the public hearing. Any further questions of staff or any comments regarding the development? Not hearing any, I would then entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the zoning change presented by staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Chris, would you please call for the vote?
Okay, Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Calp?
Aye.
Mr. Preisner?
Aye.
And Mr. Free?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0 with none abstaining.
All right. Next is item number four, D4, public hearing of Z2207 by Michaela, I hope I got her, Giro Don, requesting to amend the district map located at 3300 Southwest Van Buren from I1 Light Industrial to ONI2 Office and Industrial. Mr. Short?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner. Again, yes, this is the rezoning on Z2207 by Michaela Giordo. At the property located at 3300 Southwest Van Buren Street. The parcel is approximately 0.86 acres in size. Again, the rezoning that is requested is for the zoning change from I1 Light Industrial District to ONI2 Office and Institutional District. The rezoning is to allow for a community living facility, and staff recommends approval. Getting into a little bit about the proposed use of a community living facility. The community living facility will be used as a licensed addiction treatment facility. Just to point out, point out a few things that it is not going to be, it's not going to be a correctional placement residence or facility. It's not a crisis center where we see in other parts of Topeka where that's used for purposes of emergency shelter, crisis intervention, to include counseling, referral, hotline response. So it is not going to be any of those. It's a community living facility, which is licensed by the state and any other local regulations. I won't get into too much else of what the intended use and the program will be. The applicant will discuss that. So the existing zoning in this neighborhood is I1 Light Industrial District. As you can see, 3300 Southwest Van Buren Street is entirely surrounded by I1 Light Industrial. So some of the uses that we see in industrial districts around Topeka include, but are not limited to, uses like commercial dry cleaning, manufacturing and processing, indoor/outdoor self-storage, auto service, tow lots, body shops, warehouses, storage and distribution facilities, and also drinking establishments, to include clubs and bars. That is allowed in I1 Light Industrial. The existing land use of this neighborhood is a little bit different from its zoning. Over 70% of nearby surrounding buildings are classified as office. As you can see by the current land use map, the Shawnee County Appraiser identifies much of the land use surrounding 3300 Southwest Van Buren Street as a general office building. There are more intensive commercial uses along Kansas Avenue and Topeka Boulevard, but again, you do not see that much industrial use as compared to other industrial areas in Topeka. To the north, to the south, to the east, to the west, it's more of an office park than an industrial area. Comprehensive plan, this property is designated as large commercial per the Land Use Growth Management Plan. This future land use was more influenced by the history of South Topeka Boulevard with the large auto dealers that you see along Topeka Boulevard and the former mall to the So really, that's where that large commercial designation came into. However, an office development is allowed in future commercial neighborhoods. You do, we do see large commercial use, future land use in other parts of the city, to include Huntune Engage Boulevard, that area, along US Highway 24 and 29th Street and Wanamaker Road. And also, yes, there is a potential for a designation for an office, future land use that we could address at a later point in time. But again, office settings would still conform to future land use of a large commercial. This is a picture of the building at 33 Southwest, 3300 Southwest Van Buren Street. And to go over everything again, this entire area is zoned I1 Light Industrial District. However, the industrial land use is minimal around the area. It is more of an office park. The interior of the neighborhood has developed with these office uses, and that the rezoning to ONI2 is consistent with these existing uses in the Land Use and Growth Management Plan. And it's with all these factors combined that staff recommends approval of the request for rezoning from I1 Light Industrial District to ONI2 Office and Institutional. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Not hearing any. Is the owner present?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Michaela Giordo. I'm the property owner. So would you like to ask me questions, or would you like me to give you an overview of the use?
If you can give an overview, that would be great.
Great. Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you put the microphone down to where it helped me out a little bit? Thank you.
Is that better? Can you hear it now? I can't tell. Okay, so the proposed community living was something that wasn't able to be used in the current zoning, so that's what we pursued this rezoning. The use is a really exciting thing that we've been trying to bring to Topeka for some time now. Looking for the right property has been a huge challenge, just from the lack of inventory that's out there. And this isn't something that, size-wise, and you know, you can't just find your regular commercial building and convert it. So when we found this property, it was very exciting because it has the look of a home, which is welcoming, which is what we want. The use is going to be a designated women's program, which is something that is greatly needed in our area. It helps house women during their time of recovery and transition after recovering from addiction. And the big thing about this program, other than the fact that there's not any designated women's programs of its kind in Topeka, is that the mothers are also able to bring their children with them. So it's not a clinical setup, it's more geared towards being a home-based transitional period that's It's more geared towards being a home-based transitional period that's outpatient. And they receive outpatient services from CKF, which is licensed with K-Dads. And they receive support through different community organizations, food, educational, training, for jobs. It's essentially the gap that has been missing in our system of addiction recovery. So it's not the hospital setting, so it's that in-between. And there's been a lot of really great success with it that have proven that this model is the way to go. I mean, it's, I should have been reading because now I'm lost track of what I'm saying. So essentially, we had to use it because, we had to rezonate because the light industrial zoning doesn't allow for anyone to live, and that's what they would be doing for a maximum of 90 days is when they're allowed to stay. This is a voluntary service. It's referral-based only. It's referred through community partners. Typically, clients have come from another rehab location, and this is that next step. Oftentimes, people returning from rehab, going back into the same situation that they came from, is one of the highest reasons for relapse. And so this gives them a neutral ground with tons of support from their peers, women who are going through the same thing, as well as the CKF staff support. And the attendance rate is 95% when women are given the housing. When you take care of the housing, when you take care of the food, when you take care of the fear of safety concerns, people thrive. I mean, crazy, I know. But the cause is a good one. It's very needed. We have letters backed up from the Sunflower Association, from Stormont Vale, who's one of our partners, through many other charity organizations that have seen this, that see the great need, that are excited about it. And the rezoning is absolutely necessary in order to function, and that's why we're here. So I hope I explained it well.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. You said that there would be adults and children there. What is the capacity?
So it would be up to 25 adults and up to five children. That's the capacity, that's the max capacity. The average number of residents in the programs, you want to tell, is that 25? I'm giving you wrong information, so I'm going to let Shane take over since he knows.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Shane Hudson. I'm the CEO of CKF Addiction Treatment. The model that we have in Salina, Kansas, is the same as the model that we're working on here. So the maximum capacity, while it could be 25, as Michaela mentioned, that's not for adult women. Adult women, the max capacity is 20. We see 16 average patients per day throughout the year at our Salina location with the same max capacity. Zero to five children at any given time. The majority of women in the program don't have children with them while they're staying with us. Also, about 75% of the women are working during the day. Men are away from the location to work with services offered after hours. So there wouldn't be 25 adult women there at any given time because our max caseload for counselors is 20. Our goal's 18, but we've seen 16 in Salina with the same capacity.
Thank you. Your Salina site talks about green space. What are you planning on doing about green space around this facility?
Yeah, we would need a portion fenced, probably midway up the side of the building and the back, so there's safe space for women and children to be outside that's fenced in. There would not be a fence around the entire property. So in Salina, similarly, there's small green space available.
Are there any security concerns?
We have cameras up, and we have a security company keep eyes on it. We also have staff on call 24/7, so we haven't had any issues at our current location.
So is there now onsite security?
Just contracted with a security company to come by and check on it.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. All right. We will now open the public hearing. And if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Robert Shively, Executive Director of the Kansas Masonic Foundation, attended at 221 Southwest 33rd, sharing a common border with 3300 Southwest Van Buren, now seeking rezoning in the middle of a longstanding light industrial business park. My earlier comments were posted on Topeka Speaks web tool in evaluating the spot zoning request. The site documents were viewed multiple times, attempting to better understand the proposed residential O-N-I rezoning. Intermingling residential with commercial business is counterproductive and contrary to long-term planning by city decision-makers. The applicant asked opponents to erase purported biases in considering the rezoning because substance-addicted women and their children need residential treatment options in Topeka. Our foundation supports critical support services for women and children throughout the state, yet the rezoning request extends beyond that mission by seeking rezoning in an area not suitable for the stated purpose. There's a lack of understanding in what it means to mix residential and commercial together. The applicant map illustrates this does not fit within the existing business area. Key concerns are as follows. One, the rezoning is spot zoning. Carving out 3300 Van Buren to the detriment of surrounding business is consent to the city and outnumbered investing. To be held harmless for any adverse consequences new established residential has on surrounding businesses. To my knowledge, existing city public planning documents don't include placing residential living facilities in longstanding business and commercial areas. Is it the goal of the Office of Planning to begin endorsing placement of residential entities within commercial business settings such as this? Second, rezoning creates concern today and in the future. The proposed spot zoning conflicts with how the planning office makes recommendations to the city council. This rezoning sets a precedent for further departure from a logical, planful approach, allowing new disruptive opportunities for this or other owners to obtain rezoning now or in the long term. It is a gateway to the expansion of current sites, a broadened residential category undermining the business park atmosphere, fences, playground equipment, new building constructs. Billing owners seeking noncomplained business endeavors to their profitability will erode the zones in which a more thoughtful approach has been historically practiced. Despite assurances made by the owner today, a further resale could enable a wider land use that would further diminish property values in this longstanding business corridor. Third, the Office of Planning offers a one-sided view. A residential program may be needed in Topeka, yet numerous other properties exist in suitable zoned areas or in those areas that are buffers or transitional zones. Suggesting rejecting this rezoning may create a hardship on outnumbered investing comes as a disregard to the neighboring businesses and their market values, investments, tenants, and credits. The 3300 Van Buren site was purchased without a rezoning contingency, so any potential hardship is one the entity chose to bear. Inferring that property is not attractive to others is also incorrect. Another interested party was in the process of performing due diligence on foundation assessments before proceeding with an as-is purchase. Further rezoning the land for institutional use does not better fit for how nearby properties are. These insights are reflected in my decade-long experiences working in property development, investment, and oversight. My extensive credentials include a real estate broker, U.S.P.A. certified appraiser, real estate auctioneer, along with designations in philanthropic and association management. In closing, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on the planning commission weighs any rezoning. I urge you to deny the request since the residential model does not fit in the commercial light industrial business park. It would have an adverse impact on neighboring business. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I did read your comments on Topeka Speaks, and I guess you've been with the foundation for a number of years?
Yes, I have.
Were you on board when this property was purchased?
I was.
Were you aware of the industrial zoning of the property for your proposed office use?
Well, we're more than just an office in our particular building. We actually do shipping and stuff out of our office. So it's more than just an office.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
You made a comment in there somewhere about playground equipment. Can you go a little bit more detail about what you're referring to?
We don't know. I mean, we were not notified of the earlier meeting, so we were unable to ask, as well as I understand some others here. We called the planning commission about the initial meeting that was held, and they said they have no responsibility for that, that the owner probably gave out flyers and stuff. We did not receive a flyer, nor did others within that community.
Okay. Would the fencing solve that problem?
Pardon me?
Would fencing solve that problem for you?
I'm sorry.
Fencing?
Yes. They've already talked earlier. Mikel talked about putting a fence up right across the back, actually 12 feet from our property going across that.
Would that be helpful?
Yes, it would. Would it be helpful?
Yes.
No, it would not.
Oh, it would not?
No. It would block all the views out of our back windows.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Sue Zentara, and my State Farm agency is Catty Corner across the street from the property in question. Everything in that area is business of some kind, and I believe that zoning should remain as it is and not be residential. As a former guidance counselor, I am certainly not opposed to this kind of a facility. We definitely need these kinds of things, but not in this area. There has to be something in residential areas that would be appropriate for this kind of facility. I urge you not to approve this request.
Any questions? Anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Kimberly Hinkley. I am the property owner, co-owner of 211 Southwest 33rd, which is just next door to the Masonic Foundation and then one building down from Michaela's property. Like the others that have spoken this evening, we're an office park. We're all offices. This isn't a 24/7 area. It's a place of business. We do have meetings at my office sometimes in the evenings. I know the masons do as well. So we do have people there in the evenings and around. And obviously, we want a safe business environment and a safe place for people to get treatment as well. We're not against the treatment facility. I think that's a fantastic philosophy and idea and concept, just not in our business park. And I do know, I'm just looking at Google Earth, this Salina property, and I'm no expert, but I was just looking at Google Earth, it looks like it's zoned completely differently. There's a nursing home across the street from their facility in Salina, so it looks like it's a good fit for them there. Here in Topeka, it's offices. So I just don't see it being a good fit for that property. And thank you for your time. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commission, our committee.
Brian Hegmeyer, I am the building chairman for 221 Southwest 33rd. We lease to the foundation. We own the building. We also have four other entities that lease from us in that facility, the office space. We bought that building three years ago this month, and we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars remodeling it, fixing it up to make it work for what we want to do with it, because it fits being offices and commercial space with what we're doing. When we moved in there, that area was, there was a number of empty buildings around us three years ago. They had been remodeled, repurposed for office space. It's come a long way. This zoning, and I just have a couple, if I read this, this is from the city, "O-N-I-2 Office provides for a limited range of non-residential and non-commercial uses such as general purpose office on..." I just don't even see how this facility fits with that zoning. There's going to have to be some kind of a waiver or something added to make that work. That has not been mentioned in anything I've read so far. If you look at, as was mentioned, the plating or the layout, and I'm not a realtor, I'm not, I sell insurance and investments for 40 years. Does that give you any idea what I know on this? I just know where our office's space is and what we're doing. When I've looked around, it looked like it was three-quarters of a mile to a mile away to find residential from our space. And we are literally sharing a property line with this 3300 Van Buren. So we are the next-door neighbor. Looks to me like the closest residential space is those hotels that are down on South Kansas Avenue, next to where the new Turnpike office is going in. And I'd hate to think that's the closest residential. This just not, doesn't make sense for what we're looking at as far as what I can see. I have nothing against this facility and what they're trying to do. God bless them. If you look at their Salina facility, they have facility in Abilene, a facility in McPerson, they're all in mixed-use places where there's other residential, that there is some commercial there, but they're totally different than this location they're looking and going into in Topeka. It doesn't make sense. They just tore down the mall, you know what I'm talking about, White Lake Mall. They're trying to improve that area. There's been millions of dollars spent by business owners in the last five years in that area to fix those properties up, to make them work for what we're trying to do with them. Putting residential in the middle of that just seems like chicken and egg to me. Chicken and egg. Opposites, you know what I wanted to say there. We've had conversations with other business owners, and I think if this moves forward, there'll be more opposition, and I just don't think this is a good thing to move forward with. Any questions?
Any questions? No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen and ma'am.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
My name's Henry McClure. Actually have a dog in the hunt on this one. This is spot zoning. We're redeveloping the Gordmans Shopping Center. We just sold the Gordmans Building and five acres of land to Mayline Printing, because Mayline Printing has had to live with the debacle that's going on at White Lake Mall. They're trying to grow their business. So in addition to the 190,000 feet they occupy today on the nine acres, they're going to put a printer in there that's worth $3.5 million. I've got 44 years in the real estate business. I actually was a planning, a Metropolitan Planning Commissioner for years and served on the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I don't come to you as a rube, but I tell you where the value is in this deal is in the industrial zoning. Now, Bill, you were in the original meetings when we were talking about the TIF district that was just formed, and originally, all that industrial land was going to be put into the TIF district. And for some reason, it got dialed back. Well, I didn't, I hate to say, well, I got mine, so I just shut up. Because sometimes in this town, you know, you're ridiculed for coming up and trying to take a stand. And so the value, the value in this real estate, and here's the thing, it's a noble cause. It is. But no matter how big a guy in here is asking for zoning, and no matter how noble the cause is, sometimes you have to say no. You do. You've just got to say no and not feel... You've just got to say no and not feel bad about it and not take it home and grind your teeth over it. But this, this is going to deprecate the value of the area and not because of the use. It's because of the downzoning. So what you're going to do is you're going to create a donut. So what happens is years down the line, and Planning Commission said, well, then the precedent becomes, wait a minute, we're here, we don't want any more industrial. And the value in this community is in the industrial zoning. You've got to take a step back and think about the millions of dollars that go Topeka spent attracting businesses here in the industrial base. And I'm telling you, you're going to see a lot of action down in that area. You know, the contract on White Lake has an expiration date, and it's not sure. So that's in, you know, that could be in limbo. But the industrial zoning for that area, and I hate to say it this way, but, you know, when you don't have to come down to the Planning Commission to ask permission for something, you can make a lot of deals. And I've got a lot of deals that I'm going to be bringing in here recently or in the future. And I don't want to rub you guys the wrong way like I already have. But spot zoning is no good. And noble cause, and no matter how big the guy is, sometimes you just have to say no. It's the, you know, it's a thankless job being the Planning Commissioner. You make somebody mad no matter how you vote. But I want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas. It won't affect the value of my real estate at Gordmans. I've actually got two contracts going right now on the pad sites, one where Bennigan is and one out in the front in front of Gordmans. So I've got stuff cooking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Yes, sir?
You mentioned an expiration date on a contract with White Lake Mall.
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not lined up for closing. You know, it's, it could not close. There could be, there could be an opportunity for the contract that's in place to fall out. But I guarantee you, there's guys that have plans that would love to get their teeth into fixing White Lake. There's opportunity there. There really is. Nice to see you, Will.
Same.
Any other questions? Right, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to y'all and Merry Christmas.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Counselor? Chairman? My name is Mark Harwood, and I am, have, I'm a member of the KMF, 221 Southwest 33rd Street. And I don't have a lot. I just want to ask that you would consider the square footage of the building, the area to expand, if any. And also, did we, you know, we say up to 25 patients, but we're not talking about staff in addition to that. And what is the square footage of the building? Those are concerns, and I would ask that you would please deny this request. Rezone it. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone, saw someone in the back?
Thank you all. My name is Scott Hunsicker. I own the building at 3311 Southwest Van Buren, which is right directly across the street. I've been there for 23 years. As you guys may or may not know, we've, this, this business district has gone through the fallout of the Lindenmuth. We've, we got through that. We've had a great, a large number of property owners really concentrate on revitalization of that area. Somebody mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of money that's starting to come into that area, which is a very good thing. The reason that I located my business and bought a building down there was because of the zoning, because it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. I was on close to 29th and Gage before that for 10 years, and I've never been so happy to be off the beaten path just a little bit. Okay? The reason that I'm against the rezoning is because by changing one property opens the doors for many other properties to be rezoned in the future. By changing one property to offer different zoning may invite crime that we currently don't have. And I do have, and I don't know if I'm allowed to pass these out so anybody can see them. I did print off the area that we're in. If you look at the residential to the east, residential to the west, it is littered with crime, all those colored boxes. And right smack in the middle is where we're at. And knock on wood, by the grace of God, we don't have that crime right now. Not saying that rezoning would change that crime, but any change could change that. It could open up some doors that we don't need open. Okay? A zone change definitely would change the character and the integrity of that area. Not to mention the fact that all the current property owners in that area purchased and set their, set their businesses up because of the zoning. So I feel like it's very unfair to all existing property owners to have one property spot zone changed for any purpose. So I, I appreciate your time, and I hope you would seriously consider not approving the zone change.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bob Evanson, and some may say that I haven't went very far in life. I started my career 40 years ago right around the corner down on Van Buren. I, I am now on Harrison. And I liked that area. I've stayed in that area for 40 years because of the office environment. I've seen over the years the heyday of the White Lake Mall area and really vibrant. And then I seen the decline. Now, we stuck it out. We seen the decline. Mr. Hunsicker went and alluded to the Lindenmuth era. We finally got that turned around. People are coming in, and they're buying these buildings and they're refurbishing. We're with the demolition of White Lake Mall and the new restaurants going in. We see a very vibrant neighborhood coming in. I will tell you, I've talked with potential buyers of building, and if the zoning is, is changed to do institutional or residential, this will change their outlook, and they may not purchase. So I thank you for your time, and I'd like for you to vote no. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this matter? Would the owner representative wish to come back up, address any of the issues?
I will try. I did notice an ongoing theme when everyone was speaking. They kept referring to their building as an office. I'll just point that out. It's been zoned as I-1 since the 1950s. This is a pocket of offices and institutional. We have compassionate care community services that are right across the street from us. We have Open Heavens Parish. That's the Redeemed Christian Church of God. It's right to the north of us, right across the street. We have Family Peace Initiative. That's across the street from the Masons Building and Mary Maids. And so, and then the rest are office buildings. If we're talking about zoning, which I think that's what we're here to do, zoning change is actually the first time someone's tried to make it fit, I would think. And I kind of just did that on accident because we needed it to be rezoned because a community living facility type 1 is only needed or only able to operate in this zoning, which is office and institutional, which is where most of these, most of these are set up. There's other zonings that other facilities are in, but it's not for this type of setup. Ours is unique in that way. There's no changes or any of our operations that will at all adversely affect the surrounding businesses. I know there's this fear, and there's this stigma, and there's this concern. I don't, I'm curious to hear how exactly us bringing a facility that helps people recover from addiction is going to facilitate crime. I would be really interested to hear exactly where that comes from. Because as far as I know, that's the opposite. These kinds of programs are what mitigates people from being homeless and being destitute and turning to a life of crime to survive. And so I would just say that I would be asking myself why that would be a concern. The use fits because the area is and has been zoned for I-1 for so long that it's developed. It's, I mean, it's seven, what, 72 years? Did I do that right? So it has grown over time. You know, the White Lakes is gone. It's no longer the White Lakes District because they had to take that down. So, you know, I, I don't know how it would devalue. Can anyone tell me how this use, which is the same use as what the surrounding businesses are, devalue the area? It's not residential. It's not.
Comments, sir, to be interviewed.
I'm sorry, he mentioned. The reason, there's no room for any type of residential, short-term, long-term. It's a short-term residential use, right? No one's building a house and living there. So it's different in that aspect. We're also not welcome in residential communities on that note. So we're kind of the in-between, you know, trying to find a place that fits. And well, one gentleman said that this was downzoning. I thought, when we spoke, we were discussing it. It's more like upzoning because your zoning is going to have more parameters. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it right.
Yes, it'll be more restrictive uses in the O and I Two zoning as compared to I-1 line industrial, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so actually, this use would make it to where we'd have more parameters to work within, stricter than the current zoning. The current zoning, you could have a daycare there. You could have a dog boarding facility, right? So, and I could do that without needing to change the zoning. And I don't think these guys would like that. I certainly wouldn't as a business owner, you know? So that would make me wonder, is the zoning correct for the area the way it is? So in conclusion, I feel like this is, this fits. It's not necessarily spot zoning, but it's a property owner that's trying to zone it for the actual most appropriate use for the area. And that's, that's going to enable us to be able to bring a service that is greatly needed and will literally affect no one other than the people that it serves and the ripple effect that is sent out across the community by every person that is able to live a more healthy and fulfilled life because they had someone in their corner, because they had a community service that they could count on that got them through a difficult time. And that's all we're trying to do is promote peaceful healing and safe environment for people going through these things that, and that's what we should be doing as a community. I mean, a community is judged based on how we protect the most vulnerable of our society. And we have eight facilities total in the state and none in our capital. And there's been multiple, I hope you can read over the multiple letters or hope you have because there's been multiple people that have wrote, written letters that talk about the great need. There's, there was an assessment done that cites the severe lack that we have. And trust me, we have looked in all kinds of other places. But properties have to be available. They have to be, they have to make sense for the fit. All that good stuff. And it's 5,200 square feet. There's plenty of space for the use. We want people to be able to spread out. We're not going to put people on top of each other. It's going to feel really comfortable. So I think I've touched on everything. Kind of.
Are there any questions? I, I do have one. So there was some concern about the size. Is there going to, are there any plans to change the appearance of the building?
No, sir.
On the outside or anything other than the fence?
Yeah, there's going to be a nice privacy fence. And as far as blocking a view, the views are building at this point, right? There's, so it might be nicer to have a fence so there's privacy between the two. But there's no plans. I mean, we'll probably need a new roof. We've got to repair the foundation to waterproof it. But other than just, you know, making the landscaping more beautiful and tidying it up, there's nothing that we're going to do as far as adding on or anything of that nature. There's not a need for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. This time, the public hearing is closed. Are there any further questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a refresher on the White Lake Mall redevelopment. What are we envisioning there in the way of mixed use? Or what are we looking for there?
Commissioner, it's Bobbin. The current plan has not changed any of these zoning in the area. So the, what was approved a couple months ago was a new TIF district. That didn't, that did, that didn't change any allowed land uses in the area. The, the actual zoning is industrial and some commercial on the White Lakes property. If someone was to come forward with a development proposal for that site, they would need to come back with a development plan. That, that still is yet to materialize. But know that the zoning is, is the same as, as what you're considering tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
For staff. Is, is the community living facility designation only allowed in the O and I Two district? Or are there other districts it's allowed in? I know, I know, I know industrial, it's not one of them, but.
Yes, the community living facility type 1, Commissioner. It's allowed in the O and I Two, but it's also allowed in commercial zoning such as C2, C3, and C4. It's also allowed in the medical, medical zoning that we have and also the D1 Downtown District.
Okay. Thank you for verifying that. I would just point out that the comprehensive plan exhibit shows this entire area as, as commercial. And I'm just making the point that reinforces what you just said, that this is allowed in that area.
Yes, Commissioner.
Will, can you give me an example of some other community living facilities around town?
Commissioner? There are, without divulging everything, there are some non-congregate type of shelters run by nonprofits. That would be a community living facility.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I was wondering if this happens to fall physically within the new TIF district that's been discussed. And regard, either way, like how does that, how would this being? And regardless, either way, like how does that, how would this being a, like the rezoning, interact with that TIF district legally speaking at least?
Commissioner Nager, the property falls outside of the TIF district. Does that answer the second point of your question or, okay?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to share a conversation I had with Mr. Sharp last week, I believe. We talked about this I-light, I-1-light district. In that discussion, I said the boundaries currently there are Croye to the south, 29th Street to the north, Kansas Avenue to Speaker Boulevard to the west. And everything there was, was I-light except for the furnished property on the east side of the Boulevard, which was C-4. Is that correct?
In regards to the, the C-4 zoning running north and south on Topeka Boulevard?
Correct. Everything else is I-light.
Yes.
Okay. My only issue with this is that it's a pure planning policy that, I mean, it's like Swiss cheese. We start shooting holes in this zoning the way it is. Now, it's underutilized, obviously, because it's full of offices. But, I mean, if we start here, where do we stop? So just by pure planning policy, I can't support this.
Any other questions or comments?
Talking about questions of staff? Are we having, are we in commission discussion?
It can be either.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in what others have to say, but sitting here right now, I'm in favor of the rezoning. I don't think anybody's disputed that the particular services provided by this type of an institution is in great need and of benefit to the community. It is an institutional use under our code, not a residential use. I know that it's thrown around here quite a bit tonight, but it is institutional. We define it as such. I think the zoning code, Bill, I think the restrictions we place upon this type of institutional use are pretty severe. I frankly don't know why there isn't some opportunity for a special or conditional use in one of the residential districts. Have you got an answer for that already?
No, that's why I think we left out M-3, multiple family. You can do a conditional use in that. So that is...
I'm sorry, say that again, Bill.
I think in, is it M-3, Will?
Yes.
Yeah. M-3, you can do a conditional use permit.
Okay. I think I have an old matrix then. But, but it is restricted. You know, the opportunities for this type of institution across the city are pretty limited. And I would hazard the guess that any location where this type of use is proposed to be put in, you're going to get the same. And I'm sorry to say it, but it's not my backyard position that folks have. And I understand they're trying to protect their business, their property, their investments. But, but when it all shakes out, I think it's a, I think it's an appropriate use at that location. And if this rezoning is approved, it would seem to be that the zoning that the applicant is asking for at this location is probably more appropriate than any other zoning in the area.
Any other comments?
I'm just concurring with Commissioner Cop in the fact that it seems like there should be more options for this type of zoning in other areas. I understand this is kind of like a short-term rental sort of situation when you kind of look at it from a different perspective. But this is also, you're creating home. And we should make, we should make that more available in different areas across the city that could also use that kind of support in terms of taxes, residence, housing. These people will come out of this situation looking for places to live in their area. Right now, they can't do that because they're in an office area. So becoming more familiar in different areas of the city would be to our benefit as opposed to limiting them to an office space.
Any other comments? No other comments, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My motion is to, for the planning commission to approve the proposed rezoning from Industrial 1 to ONI-2 and adopt, the planning commission adopt the findings and analysis of the staff report as its own.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Just would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Prysmun?
Nay.
Mr. Kalp?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Nay.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-2 with none abstaining.
Next item on the agenda, item E is communications from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, make this short and sweet. I do not have any communications. I just want to wish everybody a healthy and a happy holiday. We'll see you here next year.
And do we, we do elections in the January meeting?
And to be, yeah, we'll have that teed up for you in January. Are you hinting at anything?
My term will be done. So start thinking about who you want to be next. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. A second? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good holiday.
Thanks.